Good evening and welcome to the July 8, 2020 work session of the Penfield Town Board. We'll officially call this meeting to order. And before I ask for the minutes, I would like to read the following statement into the record. The official notice, "Due to COVID-19 virus, the closing of town operations consistent with the governor's executive order, the July 8, 2020 Town Board Work Session Meeting is being remotely, is being held remotely via Zoom. This meeting will also be video recorded and broadcast live via the town's website at Penfield.org, on the town's government access channel, cable channel 1303, and on the streaming media device Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Penfield TV on your device's app store, and this app is free. The meeting will later be transcribed. Questions regarding video coverage, please contact Penfield TV at 340-8661." I'll welcome, and we'll let the board, we'll let the record reflect that the entire board is present this evening. We do have a number of staff members with us this evening, and we have a number of folks that will be zooming in here momentarily. And before we do that, let's take care of a couple of housekeeping items. We do have the June 24, 2020 minutes before us, and want to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
So moved.
Settled.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Ockeden, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. I'll ask, are there any questions, comments, discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Draw. Draw.
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFouten?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockeden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Great, thank you, Board, and thank you, Sue, for putting those minutes together for us. We will move on to monthly reports. Thus far, we have received most of our monthly reports. There are three or four that are outstanding, and I'm, I feel confident that they will be in by the end of the week. So, thank you for those that have got theirs in, thank you. And those that are outstanding, I look forward to having those in over the next couple of days. Thank you. This evening, we do, we do not have any public hearings. We do have one guest, and at this time, we will zoom in Andrew Spencer. And as we're bringing him in, Andrew is with BME. BME was the firm that the Town Board chose to put together the Shadow Pines Conceptual Master Plan update. We did have an opportunity to have a public information meeting back in March, which seems like a long time ago. And with COVID, we're getting ourselves caught back up. Town staff, along with the input that has been received from the Town Board via any comments, as well as a number of comments made at the public information meeting, as well as many follow-up emails that came in. BME took all of that and has prepared a second draft of the conceptual master plan. And this evening, we want to just take a moment and go through that at kind of a high level, so that the board can see where they are, and then, obviously, if there's any additional next steps that we need to do, then we will, we will proceed with that. So with that, Andy Spencer, are you with us?
Yes, hi.
Yeah, how are you, sir? Welcome.
Yeah, so, if I can just jump in, if you don't mind, Tony. Thank you very much for the introduction. Just want to let the board know of some of the revisions we've made. We took a look at the comments, we have reviewed the town staff and with Supervisor the plan. And the main changes to the plan were up in the north quadrant. And we have removed the community center from the plan, and have basically provided a parking area up the north end, potentially a park pavilion for picnicking and respite, a restroom facility, and then playgrounds, picnic area, and hard courts for basketball, tennis, pickleball, and those types of uses. The remainder of that area would function as a multi-use recreational field. The other change we made was a slight revision to the disc golf course area, and trying to pull that away from the residential area. And please, please keep in mind that these bubbles represent where holes may go. This is not a finalized plan, and that would be forthcoming. If we have the disc golf course of Rochester involved, potentially assist in layout of the disc golf course. The remainder of the plan has remained relatively unchanged at this point. I don't know if I need to clarify anything further. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you had. We can kind of go from there.
Andrew, thank, thank you. I know that from the, from the public information meeting, the biggest concern and question that came up was with regards to the community center. Certainly, my view has been, when this was voted on, it was in fact voted on as general municipally used to include community center, town hall, library, those types of things. However, that there were a number of folks that did not want to see any type of building, and they wanted to see more recreation overall. And I think the big, the big item, and I think, and maybe you could just comment, the area that you kind of identified for the hard courts, what, what might you be looking at by way of number of pickleball courts? Because I would say that at least half plus of the number of comments related to pickleball. And could you give us a kind of a sense of what you're looking at as far as number of courts?
I think with the breakout that I have right now, we could potentially put in two tennis courts, one basketball court, and maybe facilitate maybe eight to 10 pickleball courts.
Okay, very good. And for those that are pickleball players interested in pickleball, certainly that is probably news to their ears. So, at, and so, as you said, the rest of the, the plan essentially has not changed. The bubbles represent approximate areas, not exact areas. And I guess at this point, what I would do is I would open it up to the Town Board for any specific questions that they may have for you. Ford?
Mr. Supervisor, if I can, real quick, yeah, I'd like to thank the Town Board, particularly Councilman Bob Ockeden. At the last meeting, I think Bob was the one that brought up the issue with the rec center and going through the notes of the public information meeting back in March. Certainly, there is probably a need for a new rec center in the future in this town at a site that, you know, we can work on down the road. This may not have been the best site for that, and I think Bob identified that early on and proposed removing it out of this plan. That's the plan that we have in front of us today. So, I just would like to thank him for, for taking that responsibility and moving that forward to get it to where it is today without a rec center on this Shadow Pines property. I was liaison to the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee appointed by you, Mr. Supervisor, and certainly enjoyed that opportunity with 12 residents from a cross-section of the town of Penfield. Came together, came together and worked together over the course of quite a few months on a compromise proposal that was submitted to the town, ultimately coming through the first draft of the master plan map that we're looking at, and then the second draft, which is today. And so, I've always said, in the conversation with members of that Shadow Pines Land Use Committee, the Town Board, and just members in the community that I've talked to, that, you know, compromise is really what's going to happen here in the best interest of the town and all the residents that have interest in this property. And I think that's where we are today. I think that what we have in front of us is a very good compromise of uses on this property that seem to be embraced, not only in the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee report, but also going through my notes, you know, of the public information meeting back in March, where a lot of the speakers that came before us, I would say a majority of the speakers that came before us, did support what they were seeing in this master plan. And certainly, I think that what we see today embraces the comments that we heard, and Mr. Ockeden taking the leadership to move some things forward and to remove that community center out of this particular property. So, the uses are both passive and active recreation, which I embrace, because I think that there are interests that want to kind of see that open space element to it that you have down in what we would call the back nine, you know, or the south area of the property. You know, some mountain biking trails, multi-use trails, which was a topic of discussion in the committee, also at the public hearing, just some general walking and hiking trails, some field areas, just kind of, I don't want to use the word forever wild, but just some general areas there that are just kind of natural and landscape. And then, moving a little bit up to the northern section of the property or the front nine, you have a little bit more active use with the, you know, the golf that we have on there, the disc golf, I should say, and then some pavilions, some restrooms, some parking lots. You've got the Clark House there that we're currently trying to find a tenant for, to make use of that to complement the, the property moving forward. And so, I think it is a good compromise, and I think it, it pretty much has what all the interests are moving forward. And, you know, as we know, there were a lot of interests and a lot of comments about what people would like to see here, and I think this is a pretty good compromise moving forward. You know, again, this isn't the final master plan, but I think we're off to a really good start on the property. I'm looking at some photos here up on the screen with some pavilions and, and, you know, partnership with the school district for some cross-country races, which I think is great. We've had those in the past, which is wonderful. And then, some winter activities moving forward with snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, again, partnerships with the organizations within the town of Penfield, partnerships with the youth organizations in the town of Penfield. And the pickleball is the partnership with the town rec department and some of the senior residents here in Penfield that have identified that, you know, they'd like to see some pickleball courses on this property, too. And so, I certainly support moving forward with this master plan. I thank you, Mr. Supervisor, for your leadership in keeping this going. Thank Councilman Bob Ockeden for his leadership in jumping in and talking with all the Town Board members about his interest in this property, representing the town of Penfield and the residents here. So, I'm certainly supportive of moving forward after the discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments, Board?
I think we vetted this really well, and it's a good progress to have something that's a lot of passive recreation, which is what residents seem to want. But we have a plan, which is helpful, so everyone will realize that there's steps to be taken. It's not, even the things like this golf isn't just going to happen overnight. And I look forward to when the residents or the service groups can come in and maybe, you know, do a garden or, you know, put up a bench or something along those lines, so they can, they too can feel a part of this. I think, I think that would be important. But right now, I think what the plan looks like as of today is excellent, and I would move forward with it.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, other comments, Board?
Mr. Supervisor, if I could just ask, can I just ask Mr. Spencer just one, a couple of questions here, too?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, thanks. So, I do, I thank you very much for this new design, because I think you heard loud and clear about the, taking that community center out was, was in the, in the best interest for all, all the residents in this property. I see that, so, in addition to that parking, which I'm really big on the parking, I love this area, but I want to make sure that there's a, it's a big area, I want to make sure we have enough parking for, for all our residents. So, the parking up there, we have the parking in the mid, more the midsection where you come in right now, and then you still have the parking on the, on the back nine? Is that, am I correct, and are those the three main, the three areas you've designated for the parking?
So, I think there's, there's four areas on the site that we have for a larger parking field. You're correct on the north, we have, where the multi-use recreational field is, we'll have a parking zone there. Currently, this is showing roughly 30 to 40 parking spaces. The Clark House area has the existing parking field, and then an additional area for more parking. The main, this would be the main parking area potentially of the overall park. And to the south, to facilitate the, either the potential reuse of the barn structure or putting in another pavilion in this area, we would have a parking field in that zone. And further to the south, we do have a proposed pavilion area where we could gain access where it exists today off of Wayland Road, and then pull in off of that drive and provide maybe 15 to 20 spaces by a pavilion.
Great. That, I think you've covered it then. I think there's, there would be adequate parking for this parcel, for both parcels.
Yeah, and I think the, the location of the parking close to roadways will make it much easier for policing, especially as you travel down Clark Road and Wayland Road. Should be able to see into the site and see activity.
Great, thank you. I like this, I like this new plan, absolutely. I've heard from the residents that, that the original, that they, they liked all the ideas that were on here, again, and the pickleball, I'm glad you included more, the pickleball courts are, I hear quite a bit, people interested in more of those. So, thank you very much. I'm happy, I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Other comments, Board?
Mr. Supervisor, I just have a couple of comments or maybe questions, and I'll piggyback off of Councilwoman Draw's discussion about parking. Just again, reviewing this and looking at, I guess we'll call it the, what's probably the main trail entrance right now, due to, due to the parking at the Clark House. You know, it's our expectation is that we have a popular tenant occupying the Clark House that draws in a lot of customers. My concern is about the parking for the Clark House, and as it relates to the parking for those who are just coming to the park to, to take a walk. My concern is, is that that entrance is kind of close to the cart barn. I don't think we really know if the cart barn will be part of a tenant's use or not, but I just think we should just be aware, keep it in our thoughts, that maybe moving that further north might be an option, just so it doesn't compete with any potential tenant that's occupying the Clark House or the barn for that matter. And then, just secondly, I guess my other comment pertains to the recreational all-purpose fields at the far north end of the property. I'm certainly not opposed to having additional fields, you know, providing that there is a need for, for this through our youth sports programs. I know years ago, I would frequent Greenwood Park for lacrosse games, and, and I can certainly attest to the fact it was cramped then, not to mention, you know, parking was always a premium. You kind of had to find a spot along the road or wherever you could fit. I'm sure those programs have grown since the years that, that I was there. And I got to assume that the parking's probably not optimal for the neighbors that live along that stretch of Scrivener Road. So, on certain nights, it can probably be a little hectic there. But, again, looking at the comp plan, seeing the overlay of those fields, it's a little hard for me to get a true sense of how many fields that is. I just wanted to ask Andrew what, what that relates to as far as, you know, fields go. Is there a certain number that that space is based on?
That's approximately the same area as four to five soccer fields.
Okay.
And, and in that area, and of course, you know, there's, there's quite a few trees in that zone. And I think as we get into designing an individual field or two fields, we would probably leave trees in between fields or leave trees in between open space areas and then more of a soccer field. So, I think there's, there's quite a bit of flexibility up there.
Okay, all right, great, thanks. So, again, you know, if the demand is there, I'm in favor of adding fields. I just wanted to be sure that we carefully evaluate how many fields or how much space is needed when that phase of the project comes to fruition. So, that's it, Mr. Supervisor, my only comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ockeden, thank you. Board, any additional comments at this point? I'll just reach out to staff. We have Mr. Valentine, Mr. Tate, who's our DPW Director, Mr. Costello of Development Services, Mark Valentine, our Town Engineer and Planning Director. And I'll just ask staff, any additional input, feedback that you believe should be added to the record that maybe isn't on the record now, or you'd like to reinforce anything as a relation to this project?
Mr. Supervisor, the only thing is, you and I talked, and actually, Mr. Moore and I had talked about the idea of getting the plan back to the committee, Shadow Pines Committee for their review prior to the board taking action on it, and we'll try and do that as early as tomorrow morning if we can.
Okay, that's a, that's a great, great point, Mr. Costello. Thank you for that, and give them an opportunity to at least provide. I, I'd like to just comment if I may, and Andrew, if I get kind of out of bounds here from what you had in mind, I think as there was a discussion about that multi-use, you know, area there, it could be, you know, if a family wanted to come in and throw, throw a ball around lacrosse with some lacrosse sticks and a ball, if they wanted to go kick a ball, if they wanted to set up some bases and, and have a little family gathering and use it while they were maybe at the park pavilion, or if there were kids that were with parents that might be involved with, or grandkids involved with pickleball tennis at a place that they could be, you know, close by with some possible playground equipment and some possible basketball, and then some possible, you know, running on the field. I won't say that we would never have any organized sports there, but I think the, the idea was, is to give families an opportunity to, to use that for multi-different uses overall. You know, throw a frisbee, throw a baseball, kick a soccer ball, throw a football, and things like that. And I like the idea of, of doing it in a way that, especially those healthy trees along the north border, there are a number of pines that continue to deteriorate. And I know no one likes to have trees taken down, but when you have dead trees and you got them in an area where people are going to be using that space, walking, hiking, playing and things like that, the reality is, dead trees are going to have to, to come down. But, anything that we're able to save strategically that maybe helps break up some of that area, maybe separates some of the fields so that you could have multiple different groups there, may be a benefit as well. So, I think that's kind of the intent that I, that I envisioned overall, maybe not totally for organized sports, but for more just recreational value.
Yeah, I would agree 100%. I, I, if we just have some open areas that could function as a soccer field or fly a kite or throw a football, exactly. You have the opportunity in the future with this space, if it's reserved, we can actually put in formalized fields. And I guess that's really the intent of this larger bubble.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Andy, thank you. All right, Board, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, that the Board is in agreement with how this has evolved with Phase Two. We are going to send this out to the committee. For those that might not be watching this evening, we'll send it out to the committee so they have the opportunity to look and comment. And I might suggest that we keep this as a held matter until the 22nd, our work session. And we'll, at that time, take any comments, feedback that we get from the committee and incorporate or address those as appropriate. And then, I might suggest the next step for the Board to accept the conceptual master plan at the August 5th meeting, if that works with everyone. Okay, all right. With that, there is not going to be an action, formal action tonight, so we do not need a vote on this, other than we're going to ask Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine to get the information out to the committee and ask that they provide input and feedback, maybe that 20th, Monday, the 20th of July. Okay, thank you. We had just a slight pause, as you can imagine. Heat and technology sometimes doesn't always come together, but we got a great team downstairs that's got us back up and running. Where we left off is with Shadow Pines, and staff is going to be sending this second draft of the plan out to the committee so that they have the chance to take a look at that. We're going to ask for any feedback to be back to us by the 20th of July. That's the Monday before our next work session, and we'll bring that back. And from there, if we're still comfortable with where we are, we'll look to move forward with proposing a resolution to accept the conceptual master plan on August 5th. So, that's where we are. At this time, I'll thank Andrew Spencer for MRB, from, for joining us this evening. And Andrew, have a great evening, stay cool, and thank you for all the hard work.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a fun project, an exciting project, and I really want to see this, you know, continue and be something that I am going to go to all the time.
Very good, very good, that's.
So, thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity.
All right, have a great evening.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move into our action items, and our first action item is a request for a hold harmless agreement at 217 Hampton Way. And I'll recognize our Town Engineer and Planning Director, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We've received the request from Mr. Benacci. I think he's here this evening if the Board has questions. He's received, or, excuse me, he's submitted a request to install a fence in a portion of one of our drainage easements. He's shown it about four feet into that easement for a board-on-board fence. Our staff went out and took a look at it, did not have a concern about the proximity of where it was, doesn't appear to be going to have an impact to the drainage in the area, but as typical, want to make sure we've got a hold harmless agreement in place so that the homeowner knows and is aware, and it rides with the property, that, you know, if and when that fence needed to come down, we had to access, you know, for drainage or any other need, we would take the fence down. It would be at currently Mr. Benacci's cost to replace the fence, or, you know, we'll file that agreement if the Board so does choose to move ahead with it. It would run with the property, and we'd file that, and then, you know, any future homeowner would, you know, fall under that same agreement.
Okay.
I'll try to share my screen once again, if I don't blow things up.
So, as Mark is calling this up, I think Mark did forward us this so that we had a chance to take a look at this prior to the, tonight's meeting. And there were three, three documents. One was the letter requesting the Board consider this. The second was a, a section of the map or tape location map showing where the pool area was and the utility easement itself. And then, I think, a sense of what the fence might look like as the board-on-board that they're proposing to have around the pool, to secure the pool, make sure it's safe for not only family but any neighbors, so.
Yes, this is just a quick screenshot showing the backyard. They've indicated the fence location along the back in the dark line. The catch basin is actually off of their property in the back, but we do have a drainage easement through there for, for pipes, as well as, you know, storm drainage. easement through there for pipes as well as, you know, storm drainage to sheet flow through there. Not any potential impact to the catch basin or the pipes in the area. We did go out and take a look at it, and it provided some photos as well, kind of showing some shots of what was out there for it. I'll stop sharing my screen. And depending if the board has any questions, Mr. Bonacci's here, if the board has any questions of him about it. It seemed pretty straightforward on our end for it. And then I provided Mr. Bonacci the, you know, the standard procedure of obviously the request, which is here tonight, you know, if and the board provides their approvals, we would then need to do a resolution memorializing that for your next legislative session, and then prepare documentation that, you know, you would authorize the supervisor to sign as well as the property owner. We'd require the filing fee from them for it and then ultimately file it with the county.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mark. Welcome, Eric, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Yep, absolutely. I'll ask, at this point, I'll ask the board, any questions for Mr. Valentine or for the applicant at this point?
Mr. Supervisor, I have a question, maybe this is from Mr. Valentine. I see on that where the easement is and where the stockade fence is going, is there any, is there any gate on that easement wall of the fence, or that easement fence? Or is it just going to be a solid fence?
Maybe Mr. Bonacci can respond. I think it's just a solid fence in the back.
Yeah, it's just a solid fence.
And we don't need, and Mr. Valentine, I guess, we don't need access to that through a gate or anything? It's fine to just have it be a solid fence on that piece, on that easement?
Yeah, we've got access through other locations around the area, so we can get in from other.
Is there any intent to maintain that area, or is it just going to go back to a wild state?
That was my next question.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's good.
Yeah, it's being maintained.
So it, on the opposite side of the fence, and as I'm looking at this, I'm making a casual assumption it is on the west side, but I don't want to make that assumption because I don't have the whole map. But as I think Councilwoman Draw and Mr. Costello had noted, that from the fence to the property line, you'll continue to maintain, Eric?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Debbie, you still have the floor if you have any other further questions?
I'm good, I just wanted to see who was, that it was going to be mowed and are taken care of as well? No, thank you.
Okay, yep, great. Board, other questions or comments, either for Mr. Valentine or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask staff, staff, is there any additional information that you believe should be added to the record that we haven't already seen from the material submitted or the discussion this evening that we should be aware of?
No, that's all I have for the board.
Okay. And I'll ask the applicant, Eric, any additional input, comments that you would like to make on behalf of this request?
Not at this time, though.
All right. So I do have one last question, is the pool in?
Yes.
Hopefully you're enjoying it during this hot weather.
Definitely am, yes.
Very good, very good.
He's in it right now.
All right, seeing no further questions by the board, no further input by either the applicant or staff, I would entertain a motion to approve this with what I would call the normal conditions, that being that there will be a resolution to memorialize this, it'll be filed with the clerk's office. Obviously, if any reason we have to get in there is responsibility of the owner, applicant, to take care of either removing or replacing the fence, that will be their responsibility. And we'll have that via resolution for next Wednesday, the 15th. So I would entertain a motion of approval for this.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll move that we approve this, the request for this home harmless agreement at 217 Hampton Way.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Draw, seconded by Councilman Ockenden. One last opportunity, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
La Fountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
All right, Mr. Bonacci, you and your family enjoy the pool, stay cool and be safe.
Thank you all as well, you as well.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll be over after the meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to our next action item, Item B, customary agricultural operations. And at this point, I'll recognize Councilman Bob Ockenden.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, I just changed some screens around here.
Yep, not a problem.
All right, thank you. I just want to start by thanking town staff and Attorney Horowitz for their quick work on completing a thorough review of what other municipalities have done in their communities and to see just exactly what worked and perhaps what didn't work out as planned. So we did receive a draft of the proposed code for allowing residential backyard chickens. I've had a chance to go through and review the document. I've got some comments that I guess I'd like to make here as we go through it. First, I guess we'll start with the first paragraph. We're provided kind of with a either-or scenario as to how someone would go about obtaining permission or a permit to have chickens in their backyard. I want to just comment on, I prefer the or in the document. I'd like to, I'd like to see it just be something where perhaps someone who's interested goes online, downloads an application or a permit form, completes it, sends it back into the town staff, you know, get it approved through an identified authorized town official, and then the process would move forward from there. Option one involved the zoning board. Not sure that, I want to see the zoning board have to be involved in that unless there was some extenuating circumstances to what maybe perhaps the resident was looking to do that was above and beyond what our code was. Perhaps then I could see where their involvement might be necessary. So as I move through, that's the first comment there. I won't hit on all of the items there, as we all have copies, but as we move down, number, or letter D, it talks about no roaming on the premises. You know, and certainly, as the drafted code here refers to, we don't want them running around neighborhoods, we don't want them, you know, getting into neighbors' properties on the streets, sidewalks, et cetera, so I'm totally in agreement with that. I'd like to see some consideration given for roaming inside a property owner's backyard, assuming or confirming that their backyard has a portion, or at least, or the whole thing, or at least a portion of it fenced with an impermeable type fencing, you know, whether that be a solid wood fence or a vinyl fence, but something that is kind of private. I'd like to see, I'd like to see them have the ability to have their chickens roam in that space. Keep rolling down through, I don't know if Mr. Costello has any comments, you want to wait till I get through the whole document, but there's certainly some real important parts here that I'm glad are included. No chickens shall be kept at any time in the house or cellar of any dwelling, and obviously this is for health and safety reasons of the occupants, so there's a lot of good safety pieces built into this. There's a reference to 192 square foot area that the chicken coop shall not be larger than, and I think from my discussions with staff that that's consistent with perhaps some requirements for residential sheds, that sort of thing, so the footprint would be similar. My question, I guess, would be is whether that would increase, whether you had, you know, an acre or three acres, is there any thought that that possibly would be larger as you have larger parcels? Let's see, as we roll through the document down to letter G, the distance away from dwellings, right now, the drafted code calls for 25 feet from the permitted dwelling. I'd like to see this perhaps not have any kind of distance requirement. You know, I'm trying to think of this as my own, my own property and how I would comply with it. Unfortunately, my neighborhood, the homes are fairly close. So the distance of 50 feet from a neighboring home, and then putting it 25 feet off of the back of my home is going to put this kind of out in the middle of my backyard, which I'm not sure would be an ideal spot where I would want to see that, depending on what else I had going on in my yard. I think there's some other advantages for residents to have that closer to their home, up to maybe the back of the garage, let's say. And that would be for maintaining the chickens, especially all through our long winter months and accumulating snowfalls. I would assume it'd be a little easier to have that right by maybe a back door to their garage or, and not having to, you know, develop paths to get out to their coops. So I would like to recommend that we not have a 25-foot requirement from our own property and, you know, 50 feet from an adjacent, I guess, depending on the neighborhood, how I might feel on that distance. Let's see, there's a requirement for 200 feet from any restaurant or local, location selling food, and of course, that's for public health standards and safety, so I certainly agree with that. And then under J, it talks a little bit about the owner's responsibility of taking care of their property as well as, you know, the animals and the coop itself. You know, I'm not sure how to word it, but I think it'd be good to have some kind of a dedicated cleaning and maintenance schedule that should be kind of, homeowners should be held to. Obviously, we don't want a situation to come up where people aren't taking care of their coops and causing a problem for any neighbors. And of course, if that was the case, then I think, my assumption that code enforcement would get involved and address that matter. So I think I've hit most of my comments through that document. So yeah, I think I've covered them all. Again, I just want to thank our local group, the Backyard Chickens in Penfield Group for providing us with some great information, some suggested language for our code revision. It's been very helpful and much appreciated. So again, I think that's all my comments and notes for tonight, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ockden. Thank you again for taking the lead on this item, bringing it to the board's attention, working with staff and Town Attorney Dick Horowitz to bring this to a point that hopefully this evening, the board would support moving forward with setting a formal public hearing and vetting this out within the community, and look to do that to meet all of the advertising schedules and deadlines and what have you. So thank you again for that. I'll ask the rest of the board, any additional comments or feedback on the proposed draft legislation for this section of the code?
Mr. Supervisor, if I can just kind of add a couple of comments and thoughts with this, again, you know, I thank you for bringing this forward tonight. Also, same thing said before, I thank Councilman Ockeden for his leadership on this. I think this whole initiative started with his phone call to you and to the town board just expressing his desire to move this forward. And certainly, it's where we are today as a result of his motivation to get this going this year. I too, it's funny, I too was reading through this yesterday and today, and do kind of agree with Councilman Ockeden about, you know, a permit process may be the more efficient way to go versus the zoning board of appeals as far as residents coming to the town hall or downloading some document on the website similar to like a dog license. And I think that's done in other towns on some research that Councilman Ockeden provided me, I believe, you know, Rondacoy, you have to get a license, East Rochester, you have to get a license, and City of Rochester, you have to get a license. So I don't think it's unreasonable for us to put down as our ordinance to get a license similar to a dog license for someone that's interested in doing that and making it as user-friendly as we can, I think is the right thing to do. I think going back to item number D, I was making some notes when Councilman Ockeden was talking, and Bob, tell me if I'm understanding your comments correctly or incorrectly, but you're basically saying that, you know, no roaming on premises, certainly we don't want chickens running all over the neighborhood or running on people's property, like nobody, like anybody would not want someone's dog running around the neighborhood or someone's cat running around the neighborhood. But if somebody has a fenced backyard, then maybe there needs to be some flexibility on roaming in that fenced backyard that would not cause any disruption or any negative impacts to neighbors. It just kind of popped in my head thinking about that. I mean, I think a chicken kind of wandering or roaming in someone's backyard that's fenced is probably not as loud as a barking dog would be in somebody's fenced property. So I think that's something that we should look at moving forward that could be, you know, negotiated or allow some flexibility for a potential owner to do that. I'm going to take a couple extra minutes, not here tonight, but to look at E on amounts of chickens per size of the lot, this seems pretty reasonable to me under item E. I think that's consistent, again, with some other towns such as Brighton in East Rochester and the city. Trying to get some information from the town of Pittsburgh, but I just don't have that in front of me tonight. So I think that looks pretty good moving forward, unless some other board members have some comments to that. Square footage, or I should say, I'm sorry, on G, I do agree with Mr. Ockden, I thought that 50 feet was a little aggressive on, 50 feet from any adjacent dwelling or any building used for human occupation. I think that might limit a little bit where this, a coop and a run could go on someone's property, maybe moving that down to 25 feet or something in those parameters or those, that distance might be a better way to go. I think East Rochester even provides 25 feet from any dwelling used by human occupation. So I would propose that we take a look at maybe lessening that distance from 50 down to 25 feet or so, especially people that may have more rectangle-type properties where it may be thin on the sides, and 50 feet from someone's house may disqualify them from the potential of having chickens, or may put the only area to put chickens in, you know, right in the middle of their backyard, that then they can't really use their backyard for anything else. So I think we need to take a look at those type of things. And that was really it. I mean, I liked, I liked the references in J about keeping a sanitary premises. I think that's important. Certainly, we don't want to have anybody have any harmful impacts to their neighbors or any type of animal abuse or neglect or anything like that. So, you know, sanitary conditions or no unsanitary conditions, I think is important, and I thank the staff for putting that as a part of this, because I have to believe that those that are supporting the town's efforts to have chickens, do it reasonably and responsibly. Certainly, you know, we got to be honest, that there may be some that aren't, that may fall into a neglect or an unhealthy unsanitary condition, and we need some ability to try to correct those problems if they do arise in the near future, just like we would with any kind of animal abuse or animal neglect. just like we would with any kind of animal abuse or animal neglect condition that might be found in Penfield with any other domesticated animal. So with that, I think this is a very good first start. You know, I guess my question goes back to Councilman Ockeden or Unister Supervisor. Are we looking tonight to just kind of review this and then think about it? You know, digest it and come back for another discussion? Or would we tonight be looking to maybe make some edits to it and continue the process moving forward? So I guess that's my question to Mr. Ockeden, what he would like to do. But ultimately, you know, Mr. Supervisor, how you kind of want to see this process move forward? So I open it up for your counsel.
Sure. So I'll take the first stab at it. I think the intent this evening, if the board was generally comfortable with what was being proposed by staff and with some comments made here, that next step might be to put it out for a public hearing. We can, certainly, we have documented those comments that everyone has made. We can make, we can go back over the next day or two and make some slight modifications to that. Or we could leave it as it is and get input, feedback from residents that have an interest either way and then make final comments. I know there's been some interest by Councilman Ockeden to continue to move this forward. And I might suggest that we look tonight to have a vote to move it forward to a public hearing. If we were to do that, we would set the public hearing July 15 via resolution. The public hearing probably would not be able to be held, again, following the rules for proper advertisement until August 5. If we wait for, for another two weeks, that just delays it for another two weeks. So based on, and again, I'll take my lead from Councilman Ockeden, but based on the comments that were made tonight by the board, I don't see anything so that requires such a change that it's really going to affect the overall proposed ordinance. And let's offer it up to the residents and, and go from there and see what feedback that we have.
I would agree, Mr. Supervisor. I think it's important to keep this process moving forward. I think the goal would be to, you know, get something in place that still gives homeowners, residents a chance to, you know, get things established before the bad weather actually does arrive. And we all know that won't be that far away as sad as that is. So I think it's important to keep, keep the process moving forward.
Okay.
I agree.
Mr. Supervisor, can I just make a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
I wanted to thank Councilman Ockeden there for bringing this to our attention because, and for really taking the lead. Because I know, Bob, we've talked about this and you really have reached out and to all of us and have been a force behind this. I do agree with some of the comments. I know we've discussed the, the distance, the setback. I would too, would like to see it from maybe 50 feet to like more, more of a 25 feet. I know that's something that we'll look at and as we are going forward here. I like, also, I would like to see where, where we're making sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure we follow up. If there's, you know, any issues with keeping the facility clean, following up and making sure that there's some requirement, you know, requirements that we're following up with that. I also do want to make this easier for our residents. I mean, one of the things, one of the reasons people want to do this is, you know, for a lot of reasons, for this, you know, to, for food security to, and especially in this age of, you know, that we've gone through COVID and people being, wanting to grow their own food and, and have the ownership and accountability, the lifelong learning that we want to do. We want to teach our families, our kids how to do this responsibility. So I do want to make this as easy as possible for someone to, to get an application. I agree, like a license is similar as getting a license for, for your dog or your cat or your, no cats, for your dog. So I would hope that, that that would be as easy as possible for the residents. And I'm, I'm encouraged by this. I think that there's a lot more people now that would, that will be interested in this and doing something like this. And I think it's, it's a wonderful addition to work on this, Mr. Ockeden, how you have really taken the forefront on this. And so that, you know, our residents have an opportunity for, to, to do this, to have chickens in their, on their property and a relatively easy way to start raising them and having, having them. So I thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. And I concur with Bob's comments tonight. And I'm really curious to hear what the public has to say. So another reason I'd like to move forward and get the process continuing, going down the road. Thank you, Bob.
I don't, I don't think there were any real significant changes. We can go back here over the next day or, day or two, and we can tighten a few things up so that when we formally put it out, the residents have a sense of what is actually being proposed. So look at the setback piece, look at if that's staff approved or zoning board of appeals approved. And then just making sure that, that in the, in the backyard, the roaming component, that it is permissible in, on the property, provided it's properly fenced. So we can go in and make some of those changes and put that forward. At this time, I would recognize Councilman Ockeden if he would like to make a motion to continue moving this forward for passing a resolution on the 15th to establish a public hearing for the 5th of August.
I will make that motion, Mr. Supervisor, to move to the public hearing.
With some slight modifications that were discussed this evening so that as folks are reviewing it, either those that have an interest or not can see what actually is being proposed. It's not an either or, but we have it in black and white as to exactly what's being proposed. So I would entertain a second to that motion. Second, it's been moved by Councilman Ockeden, second by Councilman Moore. I'll ask the board any additional comments before we call the roll. And then I'll just, seeing none, I'll just recognize staff, staff, any additional comments that you'd like to make prior to the board taking a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, yes. It was, the staff put together what it considered to be a straw man, you know, designed for this. So we appreciate any comments you gave to us. Just for the board's information and review, this does apply to many, almost all of the residential zoning district. It does exclude townhouses, the PD districts, the mixed-use development districts, and the MR districts. So those are quite tight areas in terms of living conditions, so we've excluded them. I did get a chance to talk a little bit about the, the setback requirements with the Monroe County Health Department yesterday. They have no criteria for setback requirements, so.
No, no minimum criteria.
No minimums. So Mr. Ockeden's comments are well taken that they could do something closer to the residents if they felt necessary to do that. And just one question of the board, or one comment to the board, I did talk to several towns. Some of the towns actually have a requirement when they issue the permit that a veterinarian looks at these chickens on an annual basis to make sure that they're healthy and they're not having any, you know, problems, especially with, you know, issues that might affect the neighbors in some way. So I don't know if that's something you want to consider. That could be something that could be put in as part of the permit process, but something to look at. And then the other issue would be your feelings regarding the license issuing. Would that be an annual basis or something of a one-time basis where upon completion of the site being used for, for hens being housed, that they would send us a letter explaining the fact that they're no longer doing it so we can take that off the books? Or if somebody's moving and we know they're moving and they're going to take it off the books.
So we can, we could certainly review that with the town attorney, but I would ask board, your feelings. Is it a, is it a one-time, one-time license or is it an annual license? Any strong feelings one way or the other?
I'm, I'm thinking a one-time license, Mr. Supervisor, as I just give that some thought. You know, and probably the other piece is, I'm listening to Mr. Costello, that we should also factor in is if, you know, someone does have a fence, let's say they have a privacy fence, that fence has to be in place, obviously. And if that fence is removed for some reason or damaged or taken down, you know, we would need to, to know that. So I'm not sure if there's some language that would need to be added, but just, just another thought that kind of came into my mind as we were just listening there.
Very good.
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion on the table and a second. This is to take the draft, pass a resolution at our next meeting to establish a public hearing on August 5. Hold the public hearing and give the residents of the town an opportunity to speak either for or against, or to offer up any additional comments that they'd like. And seeing no further discussion on that, I would ask for a roll call, vote of approval to move this forward to establish a resolution before the board next Wednesday, the 15th.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you again, Bob, for your work on this. We'll move on to item C. Item C is a grade and fill permit request that's at 45 Woodfield Drive. And I'll recognize Mr. Valentine. We'll also, as we're bringing the property owner up on Zoom, we'll just let everyone know that Mr. Valentine did supply us some information as it relates to the property. And that information also had a short environmental assessment form. And it did have a number of photos attached to it as well. And I'll ask Mr. Valentine if he would just tee this up for the board.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. With us this evening, we have Jennifer Abenheim, and if I go wrong there, please let me know. Was alerted a few weeks ago by some neighbors in the neighborhood about some fill that was being brought to the site. I went out to the site. The homeowner was not home at the time, but did talk to the landscaper that was there. They were bringing some fill materials in. And according to our, our rules and regulations, if you bring in more than 50 yards of, of fill, it requires a permit. So I've not had the opportunity to talk to the Abenhymes directly, but I've exchanged some emails, informed them that a permit was needed. And then also, you know, sent them the information. Jennifer had sent that back. She sent back the AF, which I've shared with the board. Also took some site pictures and shared those with the board as well. So, you know, with that being said, I'll let Jennifer speak in a moment. You know, we initially just had some concerns first, and I will share my screen so everybody can see the aerial photo. Momentarily. So basically, a top-down earth view, once it pops up. You know, showing their property, they had an area off the back of their property that, that jutted out. Now you can see it on the screen in the middle. So their property is 45. They had a flatter area on the top in the back of their property. They had a retaining wall that was behind that. To my understanding, the retaining wall was in disrepair, so they took the retaining wall down and then extended out that area and filled that area behind that, you know, which is understandable. We did have some concerns. My initial concern back there was erosion when I went out there. So I talked to the landscaper when they were on site and asked them to put some erosion control fabric around that back steep slope area so it wouldn't slough off. They did that. That area seems to be established in itself quite well. Still do have some concern as it relates to the property. That would be on the right hand of your screen, would be to the east of it. There's kind of a steep drop-off between their property and the adjacent property. And do have some concerns about, you know, how that, one, is maintained by lawnmower, you know, so it doesn't get overgrown, and two, you know, potential impact to the neighbor. We've lost a little bit of that, that swell there. Let me unshare this screen and I can then share pictures momentarily. So this was my initial visit to the site. You can see the film material put in the back. This is looking from the property from the east. You can see, you know, the slope that was there. This is looking from the property that was from the west, and then it goes back to a drainage area. So our concern was making sure this drainage area was maintained in the back. It appears it was, it is maintained. They did not fill that. There's some trees that still are on their property. And then obviously, then looking at what is the maintenance of, or how are the, how are these slopes maintained? And then this is the, on the east side of the property as it goes to the neighbor. Do have some concern about kind of the lack of a swell along this property, just to make sure that any water runoff doesn't run into that neighbor's property. And then, you know, how was this side slope maintained? This is the side on the west side. I did talk to the landscaper at the time about removing this bit of soil here so this swell could be maintained. They did that in my request, so that is taken care of. We went out this past Thursday, took some pictures on site, shows they've got a sprinkler out there. They're, they're getting vegetation growing on the site. This on the, on the east side. This is that area I still have a little bit of concern about, you know, I think we should reestablish a swell through there. We've shown a little bit of erosion on that upper area. Again, this is the, the middle part of the backyard. This is showing a little bit of that erosion that's coming down that side. But then the area that I was, I was most concerned about was that back steep slope area. You can see the erosion control fabric that was installed. It did its job. They've got grass growing that, you know, has stabilized on that back end, so. Those are my two cents. I'll let the applicant, Mrs. Abenheim, you know, share her thoughts. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mark, for that update overview. And thank you for sharing that information with the board prior to this meeting. Jennifer, are you with us?
We're not hearing you, Jennifer. Okay, yeah, if you can call in.
She's calling our phone right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
We've got the message from downstairs, so.
All right, we'll. For those that are watching or those that have just joined in, we're talking about an application of a grade and fill permit request at 45 Woodfield Drive. Mr. Valentine, our town engineer and director of planning, just shared the information submitted by the applicant as well as photos of the property. And we'll wait for Jennifer to, the owner of the property, to join us and offer up any comments and be available to answer any questions she might have. So Jennifer, are you with us?
Yes, hi, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for, for waiting. I know that it has been a little bit of time. We have a number of items on the agenda this evening. So Jennifer, Mark just went through an overview and give you an opportunity to talk about, you know, what, what you're doing on the property. Ask any questions that you have for the board or offer up any additional information that maybe Mark did not touch on.
Okay, certainly. So my name's Jennifer Abenheim, and thank you very much, everyone, for giving me the time today. So we engaged on the landscaping in 2019 to complete work in our backyard to remove unsafe conditions left by the prior owners. The prior owners had left the backyard unlevelled and as Mr. Valentine says, we've seen the retaining wall that was rotten, disrepair. Railroad ties that were left on the ground also rotting and disrepair. And when I was speaking with, on the landscaping, they determined that the property was already sloping and redded. So the work we're intending to have performed or was performed was intended to clear these unsafe spaces and create a safe space for the family and my child. So we suffered with Thomas Landscaping. They couldn't be on the call tonight. And they advised that to the best of their knowledge that we stayed away from the top, the town's range area. We did extend that level that was in our backyard. And we did have Thomas add the netting and behave that was requested. And as far as I know, we deliberately stopped where we were so that the drainage would not be impacted. So it was our intention to make sure everything was very shaped and that there would be no sort of drainage contact or heber. And in addition, regarding the height of the property, as I think Mr. Valentine alluded to, we had a flat portion in the back of our backyard. And we only extended that by a couple of feet to give us some more room. It wasn't like rain or anything like that, and we believed that To my recollection, it was actually a much more significant slope. I wasn't aware of the erosion or the concerns regarding the swells that Mr. Valentine brought up tonight. Perhaps that he's saying that netting that was employed is being used appropriately and mitigating some circumstances. I'm not sure if it's appropriate, because I'm not a landscaper, but perhaps more netting could be added to those places. We were not aware that a permit was needed. We've talked to Thomas multiple times, and they were not aware that a permit was needed. We'd engaged them with, you know, the intention that they were knowledgeable about this local area, and so I'm very sorry that the process wasn't observed previously.
Okay. So the, one of the problems that I think that we have, that we may not be able to address this evening, and it's a problem, normally we're talking to residents because we have problems with drainage and there's too much rain. And we're talking, in this particular case, with lack of rain, I don't think our engineering team has had a chance to evaluate that swell in that area. And so one of the things that I think I would like and recommend to the board that we observe is that when we have some rainfall, some, what I'll call measurable rainfall, which I think everybody is somewhat hoping for, is that for us to be able to take a look at that area to make sure that there's no obstructions and to make sure that it's not creating any flooding problems for adjacent properties, either a neighbor on either side or a neighbor further up the line. So I think that's just something that we're going to have to take a look at. It sounds like one area where there was some spillover of material that has been addressed by the landscapers, so thank you for taking, having that taken care of. And at this point, I'll just ask the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Valentine or of the homeowner Jennifer on what is proposed at the site?
Just a quick question for Mr. Valentine, I guess. The street directly behind it, I guess, is Timberline. What's the elevation difference between Jennifer's property and the folks on Timberline?
That's a good question. Just give me a moment. There is a common swell that runs down the back, and again, I'll try to share my screen here. Pull that up. So our concern isn't as much for, at the rear, and then, of course, this might give me a contour. Let me zoom in. So it's 55, 52, 54, 56. So they're fairly comparable. The side of Woodfield is slightly higher, so we've got a 55 contour here. So they're about 50, there's two-foot contours, so there's 57, 59. So they're about 460 on the other side. Behind them is a 450 contour, so they're about 456. So they're a few feet lower, but there is a common swell that runs along that back property line, so the water actually conveys west to east. And then we pick it up on the discharge coming out of Glenbrook Pond. So the end of the Glenbrook Pond pipe is right where I have my arrow. So it kind of picks up this swell here, it discharges, and then Glenbrook Pond, or the discharge of the creek comes out and then crosses Timberline Drive. So Timberline is a little bit lower, but there is a fairly substantial swell that runs between them that should pick up that runoff from their backyard.
Okay. Thanks. So like you said, the real concern was more side boundaries.
Yeah. My observation, my biggest concern was the potential impact of 47 going east. Their property is lower. You know, with the property, you know, their property now being slowly elevated in that side slope, just to make sure that we've got a, you know, a decent swell between the two property lines, address that, you know, bit of erosion. I think as Jennifer had shared, you know, maybe extending or having the landscaper extend that fabric. It did its job in the back. That's well established back there. But also making sure that that side slope, you know, is such a grade that it can be mowed and maintained, you know, keeping up with our, you know, our property codes, that it's not just left to, you know, to grow up, that it is actually mowed and maintained.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Board, other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I still want to make sure that when we get a little bit of what I'll call measurable rain, that our team, our engineering team, has a number of properties that whenever we have measurable rain, they go out and check on, just to make sure things are flowing properly and what have you. I would ask them that they do the same to this property, to take a look at it. Jennifer, I think the thing that I'm most concerned is, is that the integrity of the swell conveying the water from east to west, or west to east, that it properly flows and doesn't create any problems to neighbors. So I'd like our engineering department to take a look at that. I might also suggest that if there are any areas that are still thin, any erosion, anything like that, that they get the proper silt fencing or cover on that to help establish. And I know it's hard to grow grass this time of the year with the drought conditions that we're having, but anything that we can do to help make sure that you minimize that erosion is going to be beneficial not only for you, but also to the integrity of that drainage that buffers your property overall. So Board, are you comfortable with what we heard in the fill with the caveat that we still want to check it during some measurable rain?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So that, I would entertain a motion that we approve the project, again, subject to here, the town engineer and his team taking a look at that, making sure that we're getting a good catch of grass on any of those slopes, or making sure that we're not impacting the drainage swell and thus negatively impacting any residents. And then maybe what we could do is have Mr. Valentine just report back once we've had the opportunity to see some measurable rain. But in the meantime, we will, again, approve, subject to managing any erosion and measuring or looking at any measurable rain. So I would entertain a motion for that.
The move.
I'll second it.
Been moved by Councilwoman Cole, seconded by Councilwoman Draw. I'll ask any additional comments from the board. Seeing none, I'd ask staff any additional comments that you would like added to the record that you believe has not already been discussed this evening or part of the submission from the homeowner.
No. Thank you for the board's discussion, and I'll just follow up. Next time we have some rain, I'll follow up with the applicant. Set of time, Jennifer, I can meet you out there, and we can take a walk and take a look at it, you know, in the short term, and then also wait till we get some rain and observe it at that point.
Okay. And Jennifer, any additional comments or input from your end?
Oh, just to say that we have a gentleman that mows our yard, and we had actually asked him to stop mowing the backyard because of the work. So I'll certainly talk to him, make sure he's aware of your comments regarding maintaining the backyard, and letting him know when to start mowing the backyard again.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Motion and seconds on the table for approving the fill and grade. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
All right. Jennifer, thank you very much. Be well and be safe.
Thank you all so much for your time, and I appreciate it.
All right. Take care. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Action items, we'll move on to item D, and this is an additional curb cut at 496 Embry Road. I'll recognize Director of Public Works, Mr. Eric Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I was recently contacted by the owner of the property at 496 Embry Road, Mr. Sam Perry. He inquired about the possibility of adding a second curb cut to, you know, allow, as he's kind of pulling, you know, in and out of the driveway, to be able to pull off of Embry Road in, kind of back down the driveway when he's going to leave, and be able to pull around a, you know, kind of a loop driveway and pull back out onto Embry Road. He had concerns, given the curve in the road, and especially being on the, kind of the inside of, you know, close to the inside of that curve, just the limited site distance, there are a number of larger mature pines growing up along the road that do somewhat block some of the visibility. So that was part of his concern, and, you know, he's looking to repave his driveway and was inquiring about the possibility of adding a loop, kind of in the front yard. Kind of Mark's cursoring over it, but it would come off of the driveway that's along the eastern property line. There's a tree in the front yard, it'd kind of loop around that tree and come out towards the middle of the property. So in the, I know in the past, any properties that are, kind of sit on a corner and have two frontage lines, we have approved, you know, two curb cuts to allow for loop driveways. However, any, you know, houses that are more or less have a single frontage that want that, we brought them to the board for discussion and decision by you.
Okay. All right. Board, thoughts? And then I would just ask Mr. Valentine, who's got the magic mouse, if he would just, again, and he's got his screen shared, if he would just kind of highlight what is being proposed right there, coming to roughly the middle of the lot, tying into the existing sidewalk, coming across the front about the middle of the lot, and exiting back out onto Embry Road. So I'll ask any questions, comments, either for Mr. Tate or Mr. Valentine.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Supervisor?
Go right ahead.
So, Mr. Tate, so I, I guess I didn't hear, the reason he wants this is more, is because it's a site issue for him coming out? I guess I didn't, I didn't quite understand that, because I don't see a whole lot of trees that he has to.
It's those trees that he's? So there's trees there, there's trees kind of in between his driveway and the neighbors, as well as Mark's kind of cursoring over one of them. There's a few trees kind of further to the west, up and down the road.
So if he comes?
It's a little deceiving from this picture, but from a street view, you can actually see them a little bit better.
But isn't when, where you're talking about the curb cut, won't he still have that same, that same view?
The, so the additional driveway would allow him to pull from Embry into his driveway as well as back, kind of down his driveway, and then pull forward, so he's never actually backing out of his driveway onto Embry Road. He's always pulling, you know, either off the road into his driveway or from his driveway forward onto Embry. He's never, he'd never be backing up.
And on that, if you go back to that picture of his home there, the sketch, it looks like it goes, the driveway goes very far in the back, there isn't a turnaround back in there?
Where it comes into his driveway on the side, it'd be, it's a little tight to actually make a turn.
Okay. I was just wondering. Okay.
Pulled up the Google Street View here for the.
So Eric, what is your recommendation? What's your professional recommendation?
I certainly think it's warranted being on the inside of the curve, you know, given the lot size. You know, there's a number of other properties around town with similar setups. I certainly don't have an issue with it, but certainly wanted to bring it here for a discussion with you.
Okay. Okay. Board, other questions or comments, either for Eric or for Town Engineer or other input you might need?
Do we have to make a decision tonight, Mr. Supervisor, on this?
We do not.
I would, I personally would like, I'm going to take a ride over there and just tend to take a look at it, because I'm visually, I know where it is, and I want to take a look at it again. I just want to see, I would, I actually be concerned if other neighbors, other houses in that area were concerned with maybe, you know, you know, want, have a site thing and if we're talking about other people being interested in something like that as well.
Okay. Would you like to make that in a form of a motion to table this until the next work session?
I would, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we table this to the next work session. I'd just like to take a look at where, over that, a little clearer.
Okay. Is there, is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilwoman Cole. So it's been moved by Councilwoman Draw, seconded by Councilwoman Cole to table this for two weeks to allow further review. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote to table this matter.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay. Thank you. We will next move on to informational items, and we'll start with item A, low-pressure sewers, update design criteria. And this shows myself and Mr. Valentine, but Mr. Tate also has some interest in this as his duties and responsibilities of the sewer department. So I'd like to just take a moment before I open it up to Mark and Eric, but I'd like to just take an opportunity for the board. As you recall, we had some discussions as it related to the low-pressure sewage systems. And we found out, based on input and feedback from DEC, that if, in fact, we were to move forward and we had one particular subdivision that came in, that if we move forward, there would be a responsibility for the town to take over those, those systems, those individual pumps, and we'd be responsible for doing that. And so one of the items that I think this board had done for that particular development, they said no to the individual low-pressure sewage system pumps. And basically, we said that if the land was to be developed, it would have to be developed with a regional pump station, and then that would tie into an appropriate public sanitary sewer system. And one of the things that I'd asked Mr. Tate and Mr. Valentine is, is that we did have something in our design criteria under Section 7 sanitary sewer systems, and I wanted to just bring that to the board to kind of memorialize the fact that we need to make a change to the design criteria and do that so that we can protect the town-wide residents for not having to pay for individual systems. And it may take us a couple of months to formally make that happen, because we've got a couple of other minor changes we're going to make, and as the board knows, we have to do a formal public hearing. But I just want to make, go on record and establish a record that the board is not, is going to be changing and is not accepting this, so that we make sure that we don't have any problems in short term overall. So I'm just bringing that to the board. I'll ask Mr. Valentine or Mr. Tate if you have any additional comments that you would like to make on that. And I propose the wording would read something to the effect that low-pressure sewage systems may not be used as an alternative to individual sewage disposal systems. And we certainly can properly vet that out, that, just some initial wording that we would consider for this particular matter. And I'd ask the board, any questions, comments on this matter? Okay. All right. So I might, I might ask that we, that we do via an actual vote, that we direct the staff to include this change as part of their upcoming changes, but at least memorialize it and recognize. recognize the fact that until that's officially done, that we will not accept any of these type of facilities. So I would entertain a motion for that.
So move, Mr. Supervisor?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Draw, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. I'll ask, is there any further discussion on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote on this particular item.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay, thank you, board. We'll move on to our second informational item, and this is item B, setting a public hearing for creation of a sewer district extension, sidewalk district, and a special improvement district for the Forest Ridge Development. And I'll recognize Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This is just a formality of our process. The planning board has gone through the Forest Ridge Development. This board has actually talked about the sidewalks most recently. So as part of that, now that the planning board has approved it, we're working through final milars, we're working through easements, we're working through other items. Some of those items include the creation of a sewer district, that creates a tax entity, the special improvement district, so the residents within this development, and again, I can share my screen. So the residents within this development pay for the stormwater facilities that they're benefiting from, as well as the sidewalks. So this is setting the formal public hearing. I believe the next available might be that August 5th meeting with the board. We can go out to properly advertise it and then set up the hearing. We'd go through the hearing, we've received the letter, I'll pass it on to the board, requesting the districts be formed. We already have the legal boundary description for the boundary areas that they are requesting. And then we would go through, have the hearing, and then actually create the districts that create for sewer district extension, the future sidewalk, special improvement district, and then again, the special improvement district, which would pay for the maintenance of the, future maintenance of the stormwater facility. So looking to schedule those three hearings, you can do them concurrently, you know, at the same time. They have the same boundaries. We can do the same hearing at the same time and then do the paperwork, obviously, if the board is so willing thereafter.
Okay. Board, I'd ask any questions for Mr. Valentine on this?
No.
Okay. Seeing no, seeing no questions at this time. The recommendation is, is that we hold a public hearing. Like we have in the past, we would hold that, as Mr. Valentine had indicated concurrently. We'll ask for the property owner to zoom in with us at that meeting. And obviously, we'll give any resident across the town the opportunity to comment on behalf of that, whether they like it, don't like it, any specific questions, and that we'll formalize that on August 5th. So I would entertain a motion to direct staff to move forward with preparing a resolution calling for a public hearing for these special districts.
So move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Cole, seconded by Councilman Ockenden. We'll do that for August 5th. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote on that.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
All right, seeing no further items to be before the board this evening, the July 8th, 2020 work session of the town board will stand adjourned at 8:37 PM. Thank you to everyone that participated. Thank you to staff for joining us and keeping the board updated and informed on these various matters before us. I'll just ask that everyone be well, be safe, take care in this heat, drink plenty of water, take short breaks from time to time, and make sure everyone is being safe. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.